All right, then we'll call the meeting to order at 6:03. May I get someone to make a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Okay.
Thank you. All those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 I didn't hear Fernanda or Leslie, I don't think.
Aye.
Okay.
Lori?
Yeah.
I may not be able to make out people's voices, so when you're making motions, you might want to specify who it is.
All right, so Kevin made the motion to accept the agenda.
Recording in progress.
And Brett Scarborough, or, yeah, Brent Scarborough said to second.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome. And all those opposed? Hearing none, the agenda passes. Thank you for that. Communications with parents, citizens, and staff. Is there anybody online who would like to address the board? This would be your time to do it, because we will not entertain any discussion outside of this time. Okay. The only one-
I just want to say, it's me, Lauren Thomas.
Oh.
I'm on my phone, I'm right here, too.
Thanks. Okay? Thank you. I will let everyone know that we did get a let's talk from OCA and one of their staff who wanted the board and the administration to rethink the staffing at OCA. They did not feel that multi-age classrooms work. They also indicated that they would like us to think about softening the lines of residency to allow kids that live closer to Lester that would be attending Neshabie to attend OCA if they wanted to. I think that's already out there. I think they can already do that if they want to. But anyway, they are afraid that we would be doing OCA a disservice if we staff it the way that we are currently thinking about staffing it. So we can talk about that during budget, if you'd like. Okay. Can you give that to Barbara, please?
Sure.
All right. Moving on, consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Kevin's making the motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Barbara Ebling?
Now that that's out there, I'd also like to pull the retirements.
You mean the personnel changes?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So you should do that before you make a motion.
Oh.
But it's okay, we'll do, yeah. All right. So consent agenda with everything but personnel changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All those opposed? Perfect. Consent agenda passes. And then personnel changes. I need someone to make a motion on the personnel changes first.
I'll move to approve the personnel changes.
Okay. Kevin wants to approve the personnel changes. Is there a second?
I am.
Barbara is seconding that discussion.
Okay. So all I wanted to do was say thank you to the retirees, which we probably should do every time. And in particular, I wanted to thank Mr. Roberts. I had the good fortune to accompany the jazz band to the Berklee Music Festival before they canceled that. This is pre-COVID. And the way, I think we were the smallest high school there and the most rural. And the way he got those kids to play, I was so excited as a parent and just so blown away by the level of proficiency and talent that the Otter Valley kids displayed. And it was all due to him. It was a fantastic experience that I need to thank him personally for, and I hope the kids feel the same way in retrospect. It really was tremendous. So sorry that it's going to be over.
Ditto. We should also thank the other retirees, which are Kristen Schaefer, Mrs. Donna Peduto, and-
Susan Alberico.
Right, Susan Alberico. Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of the personnel changes signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Personnel changes passes. Thank you for that. Okay. We do not have an executive limitation this time, and lucky for us, we don't have to do one of our own policies. You're welcome. Moving on, board member recruitment. Community linkage, terms up for election in 2025. The Brandon seat, held currently by Lauren Thomas, is up. The Lester seat, that has a one-year remaining of a three-year term, is Leslie Benvenu. A Pittsburgh seat, held currently by Brett Mullin, is up. Another Pittsburgh seat, two years remaining of a three-year term, currently held by Jessica Markowski, is up. The Sudbury seat, which is currently held by me, is up. We're still looking for that elusive waiting member. We need to find someone. There is an at-large position currently held by Barbara Ebling that is up. And then there's one more at-large, which has two years remaining of a three-year term, which is currently held by Greg Babcock. So please make sure, if you are rerunning for your seat, that you get your paperwork in by January 27th. Otherwise, you're not going to appear on the ballot. And if there's anybody else who's interested in running, you can get the paperwork at your local town clerk, have it filled out, and return it by January 27th, so that you can also be on the ballot for one of those seats. Budget communication planning. Budget ambassadors and budget members at superintendent budget talks. Currently, we do have at least one ambassador who's been coming, Donna Wilson. Who has been graciously willing to help us out by getting out the correct information. If there's anybody else who'd be interested in being a budget ambassador, please attend our meetings or reach out to Renee or a board member to find out how you can get the information and become one of those budget ambassadors, too. Also, board members should have seen a group of emails that went out from Melinda today that show where Renee's going to be for the next three months. Mainly Sugar &amp; Spice, I think, The Morningside Bakery, and was there another one?
Well, I haven't put-
On Keith's.
And Keith's, and I haven't put the transfer stations up yet.
Okay. So, but those were out there, so if you can attend one of those for 15 minutes, half-hour, hour, and meet people and talk about budgets, that'd be awesome. Or anything else that might come up.
Or if you have games that you think that I should be, that we know that are going to be well- well-attended, we could hold one there.
Dunk tank, maybe.
Dunk tank?
Yeah, you could send on a dunk tank.
Only if we're raising money and it's for a good reason.
Boys' home game against Fair Havens.
Biggest crowd, I think. Oh, okay. That's a good one.
You've got some Slaters over here.
Okay.
Any varsity game really is a good one to attend.
Okay.
That are home games. Okay. Okay. OV mold remediation update. So Brenda, you're up to explain what that is and give us a number before we can make a motion.
So here's just a little summary. You all know that we had mold. You all know that we've been working on it, and we have remediated all of the East Wing. This kind of gives you a little history, how it started in July, how we had brought in environmental hygienists, and, you know, kind of helped, they helped guide us through what we needed to do in order to safely reoccupy the East Wing. And by the second or third week of November, all, third week of November, students were back, second week, staff were back setting up their classrooms. The East Wing total remediation cost, including a few thousand dollars for contingency, is $147,000. And then the other part of the mold was underneath, in the basement and the athletic storage area. And so that began after, obviously, we took care of the educational areas. We started in late November. We expect to have that completely remediated by the end of Jan- January. Sorry, I get my J months confused, because I'm used to the beginning of the year being July, not January. But by the end of January. And just so you know what the process is like, first, there's the environmental hygienist come in and do air quality, then they do scrubbing, then they remove everything, which means they remove everything that's porous and could hold mold up until they see clean, not mold. So wallboard up until it's clean, and then they test again. Once the tests are clean again, then they come back and they do the remodel. They put the wallboard back in. Can I go to the end?
Sure.
And then I'll come back to you. And then, so that's been done, the East Wing. All interior work is done and over. We expect to be done and over with the pellet boiler room and the athletic storage area by the end of this month, which will include, the last step, we'll be bringing in the mechanical vendor to redo the piping, because some of that was covered with porous material insulation that had to be removed and replaced and changed, and had to be brought down so we could get to other parts of the room to remove porous materials. That overall will be about $230,000. It's a $4,000 contingency for any surprises that might happen between now and then. That is interior. We do expect to do more research on what we should do exterior-wise to make sure that this doesn't repeat, understanding that it took 20 years to get here. But we do believe, and some of our initial reports say, that the drainage and curvature of the slopes lead it to leaking right back into our basement. So I do expect, separate from this conversation, when we come back to you in the spring and talk about what we're looking at doing for the summer, that we'll have an update on what we expect or recommend to do for exterior improvements to prevent this repeating.
I think you answered my question. I was going to ask if you identified where the water was coming in from.
I'll be frank with you, not conclusively.
Wasn't it from a water pipe break or something like that? One froze, no?
No, no. It was not, it was July.
I thought somebody said water pipe broke in there, that's why I asked.
No, there was, there was, nobody could conclusively say where it went. There was initial reports that said that because the pressure was different in the pipes in the boiler room, that could have had the valves leaking, creating some of it. But that was never proven, because you couldn't find any water near those valves.
Did the mold go all the way to the roof, or was it lower?
We really believe there were two incidences that were separate from each other. We believe that the East Wing really had to do with the sloping and gradation of the improvements that actually we made in 2008. And we believe that, you know, maybe the valve pressure problems was what caused the downstairs, the below-grade boiler. But when they came in to investigate, nobody could conclusively say this is the problem.
Has-
Kevin's raising his-
Has the Muslimuwa area been cleared?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's not in the same area, is it?
No.
No, it's in a different area of the building.
No, they do not have the same type of mold.
So, for this motion that's on the agenda, do you want $230,000 as the number?
I would like, I would like $230,000, so that we don't have to take it out of the operating funding, can instead take it out of the facilities.
Is there someone who wants to make that motion?
I move-
And they should read it.
I, oh. Move that we allocate $230,000 from the facilities fund for the mold remediation. Is that about what you want?
Motion to approve using OVUSD facility funds to remedy the mold in the boiler room and East Wing at Otter Valley Middle and High School up to $230,000.
Yeah, that's what I meant to say.
That one right there?
That's it. Yeah, I was looking at the wrong sheet.
That was Barbara, by the way, everyone.
Me.
Is there a second?
You do a really good impersonation.
Sure, I'll second.
Kevin is, Kevin is seconding Charlene. Okay, any other discussion about this? The only question I have, we were not able to get any kind of insurance reimbursement?
Not yet. The insurance company has said that mold is excluded, but they are looking at providing a grant opportunity for people who have extraordinary events like this. And if that comes up, we'll apply for that. We will also apply for state aid for emergency construction that entitles us per project, and I think we have two, of 30% reimbursement up to $100,000. So I am hopeful to get $30,000 back on the middle school wing and 30% of $80,000. $24,000. No, right? Yes.
No, you're good.
Yes.
Yes, those little numbers.
It's still a big number. It's still a big number.
And if that happens, if and when we get the state reimbursement, I'll put it right back to the facility.
To the facility fund, right? Any other questions for Brenda about the, yeah, go ahead, Paul?
Well, I have something different, but it's about the facility.
Oh, well, can we finish this first?
Yeah.
Okay. So, any other questions about the mold or anything like that?
Should we have included the $4,000?
That's already included in the, yeah, that's included in that $230.
I don't, when she brought it up, the vote on, wasn't, I didn't know if we needed to include it or-
Yeah, no, if you read the, that one line, it says at 230, including the $4,000 contingency. But, thank you for asking. Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve using facility funds to remedy the mold in the boiler in East Wing at Otter Valley up to $230,000, please signify by saying yes.
Aye.
Aye, yes, whatever. It's all the same thing.
Okay.
Anybody, any nays or noes? Okay. That passes. You had a question about the facility fund?
Oh, since we're, we're all walking by it with the pathway out front, there's a lot of missing blocks. It's been like that for quite some time, you know, walking by it, saying that, since we're here today talking about it.
How do you know it's filled with snow right now?
It's still here.
I mean, trust on them.
Well, you know, that is our main entrance way. Sooner or later, somebody's going to twist their ankle.
Yeah.
And there's games going on right now. How do we maybe fast-track giving money to get that? Because I imagine if somebody gets hurt on our property, that could turn into something.
Yeah. That's most likely not going to be facility fund. It would be repair maintenance, but I won't make sure that the team knows about it.
It's all over out front, yeah, I'd hate to. Thanks.
Okay. OV fiscal year '26 budget and district warning, final draft review. Just so everyone knows, this is not the final draft tonight. We will be meeting next week. And the reason for that is-
I will start and then hand it over to Brenda.
Perfect.
So, the issue that we've been running into for, let's see, the last, I guess, since December, is that we are missing students. So this year, the state changed from us sending them information about our enrollment to us having everything that we needed in our Power School, our student information system. It would go through an external, external service called EdFi, and then on the backend, they get, they read all the information. So there's no, like, direct transfer of data. So the first time that we looked at it in early December, we had, it went through fine. We were missing a few students. And then we knew that there was going to be another running, and we need this data in order for us to determine how many students we have moving forward using the new long-term weighted model. So the second time it ran, we lost-
Still this white hair?
All of them.
We lost 500 students.
600.
600 students. And we've been trying to determine where the issue was. First, we had to make sure that it was right on our end, and it was. But there wasn't a way for the, for the state to share with us, you need to put it in this column, you need to put it in this cell, because all they were seeing was what was coming out. So we are now in a much better position, but it's still kind of in process. One of the things that I would like to thank Brenda and Alexis and others who have helped along the way is because of our attention, extra attention to detail that we've had to, we've had to utilize at this point, that we've been able to find additional students and additional, even more students than the students we had in the first run. So that, on its face, is pretty good news. So I'll leave it to Brenda to explain more of where we are.
Yeah, so I'm going to share just kind of this little cheat sheet, if you will, about the version. So when we met to summer 5th, I think I had just gotten my information, and it looked fairly reasonable, but I literally just got it. So kind of looking at it afterwards, it still looked pretty reasonable, but I recognize there are a few missing kids, specifically high school kids at the Barstow level who go to school choice in private schools. Then I was excited for version 2 to come out, and when version 2 came out, all of a sudden, our free and reduced kids went away, as if we didn't have any students on free and reduced lunch, which we knew was an error. We knew that that was wrong. And that's what version 3 was. So as Renee said, we have been working with the state to figure out what changed in their EdFi collection, because that platform actually goes into our Power School student information system and extracts the data. What changed between version 1 and version 2, such that we lost all of the free and reduced students? And the reason why it's important, if you look at the grid below, and you'll remember, we talked about this, this is year two of the new long-term weighted average ADM. There are five components into weighting students. First one's easy, that's a two-year average of students over a 20-day period. We never had a problem with that. The second one is free and reduced, so every free and reduced student counts for an additional 1.03 kids. So it's important to get that number right. In the very first round of numbers that we had on December 5th, Otter Valley had 513.97 free and reduced numbers, free and reduced students. And then by the second and third, we were down to, what, 19? So we knew that was really the problem, but working with Power School and the state to try to make that connection so they could get that data was challenging. We did confirm as of yesterday, we're not the only ones in this problem, by the way, but we were the ones who lost most of the free and reduced students. And by yesterday noon time, the poverty kids are back in. So that's really good news. But we are still missing 35, 30 to 35, private high school students at the Barstow level that have to be in before we can certify the information. As soon as, which would really be kind of that step one. So we have to certify step one, what's called ADM, or Average Daily Membership. Soon as we do that, and every other superintendent in the state does that, well, we verify 1, 2, and 3, actually. So once we verify all of those, we're good at 2, and we're good at 3 now, we just have to get 1 done. Then the state will rerun this again, and because we know that the 2, 3s are in now, we're pretty confident that we'll get a good number, and it will be higher than it was. But I honestly can't predict what that number is going to be. And then the fourth and fifth component is not something I can calculate anyways. It's based on statewide demographic information that we don't have access to. So that's why you don't have any updates on budgets, because I didn't have anything really to give you.
And we're one of 12 school, one of 12 school districts slash supervisor unions in the state-
Yeah.
-that are in the sample.
So is it a computer glitch or something? Is that what you're trying to say?
In fairness to everyone, because this is a stress on everyone's part, the state as well as ours, the state made a change between version 1 and version 2, that at least we didn't know why or how it was made, and our data didn't go up correctly.
So you inputted wrong, basically.
It was correct at our end, but from the pull-up to the state where they were pulling it from, they weren't pulling it from the fields we thought it was supposed to be in. So we worked, we had to work with our vendor, Power School, to make sure that there's a connection. And we had to connect with other SUs in the state that are also using Power School to make sure that it was in all of the right fields. It always was, but there was some connection that wasn't happening between us and the state.
Look, with the states on it, too, because they're busy helping, right? On their end?
Right. You're reading between the lines. Thank you.
That was my point.
They were-
They just dish it out and you fix it.
It felt a little bit like that. I will say that the, they've been holding office hours so that people can talk and try to figure out what they need to do. And the deputy, the interim deputy commissioner, secretary, right, Jill's the secretary, the interim deputy secretary said, "We're just going to all get through this, and then we're going to figure out where everybody could have done better." So the state knows that they made some errors and didn't do some things, and we know that we really need somebody verifying data sooner rather than later in this process.
The 35 kids that you're also, that is a new process, too.
Yes.
That is brand-new this year. So that is a piece that we've had to, we've had to incorporate in the last-
Month.
-three or four days.
At least, yeah.
Right. In order to make sure that we had those in place so that they could count as part of number one. And it's possible that some of those kids who are number one are also going to end up as part of number two or number three.
So with finding these kids, then our increase should go down, or overall, maybe?
You know, I really wish I had a crystal ball on that. I really do.
But you don't.
I just don't. I do know, literally, I came in, we had an admin council meeting, and I just got the email that the night before that version 2 was out, and I'm like, yay, I'll have good data. I came in right before the meeting, I pulled down version 2, and I lost my breath. I said, "Oh, my God, how could this be? Where did all these kids go?" And, you know, immediately went into panic mode about what does this mean and what happened. So we've been in that stage for two and a half weeks, trying to make sure we get this fixed, because we can't not have those 600 kids, right? That's real. Those kids are real. The cost associated with educating those students, they're all real. It's just the data that's wrong. So that's kind of where we're at. Once, I do expect, actually, that Barstow's count, because they do have 35 high school kids, and high school counts higher, will actually go up a little bit more proportionately than we do, but I can't predict that either, and that's necessary to assess the Rattler Northeast costs. So the shares between the two and how they might change are also essential to assessing the Rattler Northeast costs. So as of yesterday, we had, I think it was 635 or 600 and something 5 free students. And Barstow will be less of those, knowing that in December, we had 513 of them, and Barstow had 73. I'm guessing that split might be pretty comparable, because I think that's probably fair. But both of those numbers will go up because of that.
Does the state aware of the urgency of the situation for-
They are, because they keep sending messages to Renee to certify the data. And I keep saying, "You can't do that yet," because it's not right yet. The challenge that I have that's causing me a lot of anxiety is the state won't do version 3 until all 12 of the school districts verify step 1 of this data. And we're one of them that can't verify, because we're missing kids still. There are some other big districts that are in there that are missing kids, so South Burlington, Colchester, Southern Vermont.
So it's all over?
All over the state.
And it could be more than 12 districts, because there could be districts that just don't realize they're missing kids?
Yeah, if it's close enough, they wouldn't even notice.
Exactly. Exactly. If it's close enough.
Any districts gaining kids? What software do they use?
Yeah. Yeah. So it was, so soon as we have those numbers, and we feel confident in those numbers, which I am hoping will be by the end of day tomorrow, then hopefully, the agency will rerun version 4, and I can- rerun version four, and I can do the assessments correctly and give you an updated budget. Obviously, I have to before next Tuesday.
Or Tuesday. Yep.
I do have one more piece of data, if you want me to keep going.
Sure.
So I'm just gonna share again this with all of you. Make sure I have one. Some lucky people get yellow, because I ran out of my paper. You know I'm copier-challenged, too. So you'll remember last year, I mean, this year, CLA changed. And they now do what's called the statewide adjusted CLA, and what that means and how that works. And at the end of the day, the effects of this statewide change do not change what people pay in taxes. The only thing it changes is it is a closer estimate to what we expect before we have CLA and where we end. So in this grid that I just passed out to you, if you start from the bottom and you work up, I'd just like to walk you through it a little bit. Their intention does work, and if we had LTW ADM sooner, then we would have been in a better position.
Is there any way to share this with them, so that they can see it as well on, I don't know if this is a document that we can share?
Um, yes.
This doesn't affect property taxes?
This will affect.
Yeah, it might, but almost $200.
This might be faster.
Okay, yeah, oh, good, yeah. All right, we got it.
Yeah. Debbie, you're gonna scan it?
It's like the opposite of this, right?
So if you start from the bottom...
I just wanted our board member, we have, we have four board members online, and I think they should see it.
People don't like the numbers, so we'll just add a different multiplier to change.
Right? I had to do three grids to figure it out.
Yeah. Well, even then, it's like, it's the opposite of this, right? So the minus, that just means that you're gonna pay more.
Yeah, minus is bad.
Minus is bad.
Paul?
Good question. So the poverty part?
Yes.
Isn't every student eligible for free reduced lunches?
They are.
So is the poverty number numbered?
So that's a really good question. The state provides universal meals. And that means that no student has to pay for meals. That doesn't mean every student is eligible for free and reduced. It means no student pays for meals, and the state of Vermont picks up the difference. They take it out of the education fund to pay the difference between what students who are, who are eligible for free and reduced, they get paid by the federal government. Their meals get paid by the federal government. The students that are not eligible, those meals get paid by the state of Vermont.
Okay.
So you are, you are right that no student pays for meals, but not all students are free and reduced eligible.
They qualify for poverty?
Correct. And only those students that qualify for free and reduced meals based on direct certification from various different organizations like SNAP and Medicaid, foster students, care and custody students, homeless students, migrant students. Only those students that are considered directly certified are actually free and reduced eligible.
There we go.
They're the 619 we lost.
So we're not relying on guardian self-reporting for kids?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Okay. So if you look at the bottom up, I will just tell you, that's kind of comparing apples and apples and what I've taught you over the decades with Act 60, which is what the property values are listed on, on your town list, and what they are selling for. The difference between those two values are considered the common level of appraisal. And so between last year, or 2004, which is for the 2005, the year we're in, I'm just gonna do Brandon's, because there's eight towns, common level of appraisal was 74%. In short, that means a house sold for $100,000, but was on the grand list for 74%, or 74,000. The state corrects that by increasing the tax rate that 26%. So in short, if you had a dollar tax rate, you now have a $1.26 tax rate. Okay? In Brandon, again, just using Brandon as the example, between last year and this year, their CLA dropped even more. So now, that same, that house that sells for $100,000 is actually listed on the grand list at $67,000. So that 33%, right, is going to be adjusted in the tax rate to collect to 100%. So again, if the tax rate was a dollar, because it's a 67%, it would be at $1.33, be 33% higher. The state said, finding this information out, this bottom grid, the last week of December, and then having to sell your budgets both to the community and to the boards was a challenge. Honestly, I, I think, I don't remember if it was Kevin who said it, they didn't want us to be able to blame the CLA, when the reality is, it is the CLA. That's the problem. So they said, "We're going to now give you a yield that is based on a statewide average, and we're going to estimate what we think your CLA would be." And so that's that middle grid. So in that middle grid, they're, they're saying that, the initial is what they told us in that December 1st letter at, at that time. They anticipated Brandon would be at 68.4, and it's at 67.62. So the decrease is less than one point, or .78 of one cent. And the whole purpose of them doing that estimation was so that we would have, there wouldn't be the shock value of a 33% increase from what we projected. It would only be that .78. Does that make sense? Yeah, so as much as it makes. And then on the top part, which is probably the least logical to understand, is the difference between our town's value and the statewide average CLA. So the statewide average CLA initially was 72%. Brandon was 95% of that. So if you took 95% of 72%, you got that middle grid of 68.4. And same for now. So now, the statewide average actually ended up being 72.36, which is good news, right? Because it wasn't quite as low. So that meant, but the Brandon actual CLA of that was 93.45. So really, the top grid means very little, except that the letter that goes to the towns give you all these numbers. And so I kind of wanted to give you this little cheat sheet to help explain where they are and what they mean, because people see a 95, and we would normally say, "That's pretty good." But it's 95 of that 72. It's 95 of that statewide average, not 95 of 100. 95 of 100 would be lovely. Want me to leave now?
How long is this gonna go on, until everyone can be reevaluated or reappraised? I mean, because then they're gonna change it again, and it's gonna be silly.
Yeah, I can't predict that, obviously. I do, I don't know if anybody knows if any of our towns are currently under reappraisal. But we all know that part of the problem is even finding a company that does it. Because...
Well, we could include the year when they were reappraised, because a lot of them were a long time ago.
Yes. They probably were. I, I think last year, during the multiple budget votes, I think I had information on when the last time a reappraisal was.
It was within, within the last seven years. Since I bought my house, they've wanted to reappraise it.
Right, Brandon's been reappraised once in the last four years.
Something like that.
Four, I think it was four years ago, it was reappraised.
I didn't let them in.
These are a three-year average, too, right?
Yes, the CLA is a three-year average. And so we saw it from the pandemic doing this. But it's still going down.
Right.
Because houses are selling for crazy money.
They are, and there are not a lot out there.
Could tell me, sell and move to a whole other state.
Yeah, right, see, that's the thing. Great time to sell, but we're gonna buy.
West.
West. Go west, young man.
All right, any more questions about this particular item?
I, I have a question.
Sure, Fernanda, go ahead.
So Brenda, in the bottom one, which is the one I understand the most, right?
Yes.
74 points, and then the difference is 200. And that makes it $1.26. What, what are we going with? Are we going with the middle one? Are we going with the top one? And what does that mean in regards to the tax rate? And finally, that, that difference, does it matter, really? The, the third column in, when we're figuring things out? Because we're actually going, we're not comparing it to that, right? It's not the difference between them, it's more the, the difference to one, to, to a 100%, right?
It's a very good question. So thank you for asking. So the purpose of the difference is, it is honestly telling you what your taxes would do if you did nothing different. Right? So in Brandon, because the, the true CLA, not the statewide adjusted, not those two top grids, dropped 7%, if our spending stayed the same, we would automatically have a 7% tax increase.
Gotcha.
Right?
Okay, so we, but for this particular budget, which one are we going with?
At the end of the day, it's the bottom grid that is, the results of the, all of these grids end at the same number, which is the bottom. There's just another wrinkle in order to explain them, because they really didn't want us to be able to project, say, a $1.20 tax rate that was then later adjusted by the 37%.
48%.
Exactly. And then that, the real tax rate that, again, between 20 and 40% of our population, those are the only ones who pay this rate, they would pay on that adjusted number. So at the end of the day, they're all gonna result to the same cost to the taxpayer.
So essentially, that difference at the bottom is what people are gonna see in their tax bills? If that was a one-to-one?
If it was a one-to-one. It's not a one-to-one, we know that.
Right. So if we're seeing a 4% increase in our expenses, if that's what we're projecting currently, then you're also looking at another 7% on top of that, if you're living in Brandon.
Couple of components. First is how much do we spend per pupil? We don't know, because we don't know our pupil number. But let's just pretend that that's a 4% increase.
Okay.
The next one is, what is the yield? And the yield is actually going to give us more. Let's present, pretend, just for argument's sake. So 4% is our spending. Again, don't hold me to this and ask me where I came up with it, because I'm doing it out of my head. 4%. The yield increases 2%. Now we have a 2% tax increase. And then you add these numbers to it. So in Brandon, it would be a 9%.
Okay.
Two, kind of under our control, definitely, and the other seven because of the market.
Right.
If the numbers turn, if the enrollment numbers turn out
Better.
Better than these, than the 2%, not the 7%, because that's static.
That's done.
This is done.
The numbers under our control will be to the good.
So finding more kids is beneficial to us.
Spending that time was wise.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Any other questions for Brenda about the grid? And about how the state's mucking up how we do this?
Because there will be a test. When, when Renee does his copies, there's gonna be a test.
Is there a question over there, guys?
Free coffee if they get it right.
Well, Nash, please. Okay. The other thing I thought we probably should talk about, since we probably will be voting on a budget next week, is the, let's talk that we got coming from OCA. I think it's important that we talk about it as a board, so that we can give direction to the administration if we're gonna make any changes there or not. I don't have, you have the email, too, because I think it was sent to you as well, on my phone, otherwise I would, because that's why I'm trying to do it verbatim. Shit from the hip here. Gave my son, my phone to my son. That was silly of me.
Renee, do you think you can project our budget presentation from last time?
Yes.
Because I think that might help looking at the OCA slide.
Yeah, I think it's just gonna be helpful. I mean, I, I think we need to talk about it, and not wait until next week, when we are looking at numbers. And there is some concern out there.
When do we have to pass a budget by?
We, well, we, we technically have two weeks to do it. We could do it next Tuesday, or we could do it the following Tuesday.
That's really hard.
It is very hard, too. So we're kind of hoping, I mean, we should all be hoping for next week, if at all possible. But, and that's why we do that special meeting.
So just so you know why, because it seems like, God, that's a long ways from voting. We're required to have the annual report in the hand of voters, not more than, not more than 40 and no less than 30, from the informational meeting. Our informational meeting, I believe, is February 26th. So that means voters have to have it 30 days before February 26th, just like January 28th. And the printers need some time, plus actually shipping it. Unless you'd all like me to give you handfuls to go handle.
And so two weeks from now would be the 21st.
We wouldn't have enough time.
Pretty darn close. But it's also, I mean, it's kind of out of our hands. We need those numbers. And we also need to get something out in front of people, too, before we vote on it.
All right, so I'm just gonna read this, so that you all hear exactly what it says. "Hello, OVU Board. Thank you for your commitment to our students and community. I write to you in response to the recent board meetings. OCA has been a topic of conversation, and I thought I would just shed some light onto a few things that were mentioned. The first is the concern of eliminating a teacher. While you may look at the numbers and see there is a small class, it is important for you to know what a multi-age classroom in the primary grades requires. With the intensive, heavy, and teacher-intense instruction of the mandated literacy and math programs, it's impossible to teach two grades at the same time. The lack of independence developmentally appropriate for young learners means that they need intensive adult instruction. What this means for multi-age in primary is that there will need to be an additional adult to teach the other grade or, at grade level. In the past, this has been a full-time position that shared teacher and intervention duties. They would teach one grade while the general ed teacher taught the other, for both literacy and math, and they would provide intervention services during other times. I would urge you to greatly consider this need when looking at cuts. These need, their needs, and that's in capital, needs, to be a licensed teacher to teach the additional multi-age primary grade in addition to the general ed classroom teacher. Even if this is a part-time position, this needs, this, the need for this is so important. The academic and SEL challenges for our students are high, and ensuring adequate staffing to teach to grade level is essential. I know there once was a time when multi-age classrooms were the norm. However, times have changed, and so have the needs of our students. The program makes this a huge challenge, and additional, and additional staffing is necessary for the success of all of our students. Another idea I want to bring up for consideration is the softening of town lines when there is a small or large bubble class. Many of the students live closer to a different school than their home school. With the current small K-class, could we look at offering school choice to some Brandon students who live closer to OCA to help alleviate the large numbers at next? who live closer to OCA to help alleviate the large numbers at Neshabie and make a sustainable Kinder Class OCA and keep all OCA teaching positions? I am sad to hear that the only suggestion was to take the current Kinder OCA students away from their school and eliminate a grade, which would be a snowball effect with siblings. I think that reversing this concept could both benefit Neshabie and OCA. I hope you will consider these options challenges when making the budget decisions. Yeah, Brendan.
I know we've gone over it before, but again, how many kids are we talking about?
So I think, I think he's gonna pull it up right now.
Yeah.
So I won't say anything until he does.
Can only be wrong.
I know, right? I know that there were four Kinder students. I know that.
Okay, yeah.
Or there's gonna be four first graders next year, maybe.
Yeah, I've been thinking about.
Well, you're K now, so.
Right, so it's for first graders.
In the end, there would be two classes in multi-age.
Okay.
I'm not sure if the author was asking you to consider not reducing one and adding one? Because there is projected two multi-age.
All right. So here's the grid for Otter Creek Academy. So looks like next year, there would be four kids in first grade, and they're anticipating ten kids in kindergarten. So it would be a K-one class of fourteen.
And then there's another class.
And then, right, and then the four or five classroom would also be a multi-age classroom of eight and six. I think that's it. Which, again, is fourteen.
Would that not just kick the can down the road? Because then doesn't the second grade only have four kids the following year?
Right, so.
It just follows them, yeah.
Right. So one of the things about multi-age classrooms, and correct me if I'm wrong, but in my many years of knowing this, is that you don't want to keep moving multi-age classrooms around just to fit the kids. So if you do a K-one class this year, you don't want to do a one-two class next year. Or to, you know, you don't want to keep doing that, because it's just, it's not good for the kids.
I think the next slide, Renee, might show you the projection for the next five years, if I remember correctly. Nope, I guess not.
That's the high school.
One of the things I want, can we look at the Neshabie slide, though? Because I think it's important that we see the Neshabie slide, because that was mentioned. If we look at first grade, we will see that we're only looking at thirty-three kids next year. And so they're not bursting at the seams of first graders and not even kindergartners. Normally, I mean, it used to be that Neshabie would always have sixty kids, three teachers and sixty kids.
So the reason why, I think the reason why that star is there, is that one of the teachers that we are holding in, we're holding in reserve. So it's really, we're allocating three teachers there, but right now it's two classrooms.
Okay.
And so in this, if for whatever reason we have a large run of, like, we have many students enroll, we have those teachers in reserve that we can deploy anywhere in the district.
And they are reducing one K-position through attrition at Neshabie.
Nationally, okay. And we were discussing, the idea right now is to cut a teacher at OCA, but it's not necessarily one of the teachers that works at OCA, because it's done by.
Yes.
Seniority.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So the new information tonight, from my perspective, is the complications for the teacher that were described in the email. Frankly, they're over my head. I'm interested in what Fernanda would have to say about this. And my inclination is to defer to the administration on these questions, because, you know, the demands on the teacher, the paperwork demands on teachers based on different ages and the learning needs of the kids and so on. That's not anything I can make a reasonable judgment on.
What about the, there was questions about curriculum, too, right?
Well, let's hear from Fernanda. Since you've asked about Fernanda, let's do that first. Fernanda, are you there?
I'm here. So I think when we discussed this last time, we also talked about the fact that it is not business as usual when you have a multi-age classroom, that there are adjustments that need to be made and supports that need to be given in order to have it be successful. So, you know, if you're expecting a teacher to be teaching the math curriculum of the kindergarten and the math curriculum of the first grade, that teacher is exactly right. It's not doable for one teacher to be teaching two grade levels for every subject. So what happens usually in a multi-age classroom is that there is a lot of prep work done to create a curriculum that meets the needs of the kids, that is melded, right, into a two-year, into two years of teaching. So it doesn't all happen that they all, you know, that they're doing the curriculum the same way as other kids in other schools, if it's that well-aligned already. So I think, right, it's, we need to ask the administration what supports would be given to this teacher to be able to accommodate the fact that she will have two grades. It's, you know, it's happening also in the four-five. So it's happening in two classrooms out of, in four classes out of that school. So there will need to be some, you know, some support given, I think, to be able to be successful in that. Particularly if there are teachers who have an experience with K age before, you know, there will need to be some preparation. Like, I think I said before, it can be quite successful, but not without support and not without making some decisions about how the curriculum will be modified.
So I'll start first, and then I'll kick it over to you, Debbie. I think, I think you're absolutely on point, Fernanda, that having a teacher go into this without the requisite preparation, the students and the teacher would be set up for, to be unsuccessful. So it'd be incumbent upon us to make sure that not only are we providing the necessary training on how to conduct the classroom with two grade levels, but also providing the resources and essentially a cohort of others who have gone through this. Because as has been mentioned before, there are, this is something that has been going on for many years, not necessarily in our district, but in some places where they need to make sure that they keep their school open. So it is a way for us to make that happen, but also, we can't not support along the way. And so not only are we supporting the teacher, but we'll also have to support the students, too, by coming through with, making sure that we really have individualized education expectations for each of them.
So I appreciated the email. Everything that the teacher put in there is absolutely accurate. We do have a new ELA program coming in that gives their, well, one of them, we're looking at two, that will have very specific guidelines for instruction. And with a small school such as OCA, I think that the best model is not to sort of just put the onus of this on, like, the K-one teacher and the four-five teacher, if that's actually how it flushes out, but rather look at all of the staff there, including the interventionists, including the special educators, looking at everyone and saying, okay, in all of these components of, like, a reading or a math program, there are some components of each of them that would require a very specific grade level, like, a single group of kids with, you know, one teacher receiving direct instruction about that grade level. And then there are other parts that are a little more independent or practice-like, where you could group a couple of grade levels together. And it would be really thinking about taking sort of everything that goes on in the school and sort of organizing it so that, you know, kids could go between teachers and between schedules to make sure that we're honoring that grade level work and making sure that we are, you know, getting all of the components of the programming in. Because that is where, I don't want to speak for her, but I believe where she's going is that, you know, in our Bridges program and certainly in the two literacy programs that we have looked at, there are, in order to teach that with fidelity, there's lots of components to it. So the minute you start sort of cutting out components in minutes, then you, you know, we're not getting the same instruction from sort of one student experience to the other. So I think it's really a whole-school effort in order to look at the scheduling and pull everything together. And like Renee said, we do have the, we actually have two backup spaces in the district that should we, you know, as we get more data in, and we're in the middle of a cycle right now. We have spring data, you know, if our numbers increase, if our, if we have more data that says that we have more needs, we do have these other backup places that we could look. So, but it's a, it's definitely a full-school effort in order to, in order to accomplish this with the staff that we have scheduled there now. Because in the past, it has been done by an interventionist, but we are, we have one interventionist in the school right now. So very small portion of that, of that interventionist at most would be able to be used for, to support.
So I guess what I would ask you all in the administration is to, and correct me if I'm wrong, rest of the board, but is to look at that over the next week before we come back together next Tuesday and see if we need to staff that differently. If it looks like it will work the way it's done, then great. But if there's, needs to be a different way, then we need to think about that. Am I wrong? Does anybody agree with that?
Generically, no. I mean, I don't, I don't think that's the only problem with the budget, to be honest with you.
Well.
I shouldn't say problem, but I, you know, we're cutting a lot of student-first positions, and we should be concerned about that.
Anyone want to say anything?
Brenda does.
Go ahead.
So first, I want to say, speaking from, from my perspective, and I know that my colleagues agree, we don't say, this is a great idea, we can't wait for you to cut that, right? Okay, so, so we don't come to you with a recommendation of reductions because we think this is the best thing to do in the world. We come to you based on the information you told us. And one of the things you said to us was, be true to your class size policy. And that's why the reductions were recommended. And to use the opportunity or the beauty of attrition so that less, you know, real valuable staff members were affected by some of the changes. So, and then, and then the reality is, at some point, and I think Fernanda said this beautifully and eloquently, we all know that a class size of four isn't healthy, even, even in any way. There's no way a class size four is a really good class size. It doesn't provide the student with the information and the ability to work with other students and to learn collectively and to grow. So, you know, I just wanted to, because sometimes I walk out of these meetings feeling like these were our recommendations and we're villains. These are not meant to be villainous recommendations. They are meant to be recommendations that hit the reality that Vermont is a small school. There are small students, or there are declining students, and we're trying to come together with that fine-toothed, tight-rope walk between what doesn't harm students, and it's a bell curve. Four is too small, forty is too big, right? There's a bell curve, you know, trying to balance that. So I think the reductions that were made were really focused on those, those beginning things. They were, and I think there was a slide on it that said, might be one of the first slides, that said, you know, you said optimize class sizes. We looked to attrition and did that as much as we could. We've recognized that, looking at class sizes, we still have two full-time classroom teachers at both Neshabie and Lowthrup that bring our class sizes below what we would say is recommended. Then we looked at, when can we take advantage of attrition? Take advantage of attrition. It's easier, it's better, it's more humane, it feels, it feels better. And then kind of, you know, where do we go from there? It's never easy to make these recommendations. It's never popular. And I'm tired of being unpopular.
I think there's a song about that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there any, was there any recommendations about the administration level being cut instead of just the teacher level, the students, people that work with kids? Any positions are?
So I can, so our grant-funded positions are going away. And then we've also reduced several, we've reduced our coaches. And what else?
Coaches, wouldn't you say?
So our instruct, we had an instructional coach.
Instructional coaches.
One instructional.
One instructional coach.
Now, now she's a teacher.
Now she's a teacher.
And I do have to say, I didn't write education quality standards. I don't know how they were come, how they, how they were created. But if you look at EQS, it will tell you we are under-administrated, that there should be more principles than we currently have. And that's because they recognize that in order to go from a principal who is maintaining a building and doing the best they can to lead, to lead instruction, they are in the moment, working every day. To go from that to actually planning and looking forward, we don't have as many principles as we really should. Again, I didn't write EQS.
According to that guy in Ohio.
Brenda and Brett are both right, and they're looking at it from a different perspective, that Brenda has to present us a budget and run all these numbers and make sure that everything adds up with the state and all of that stuff every year. And she has to have that, that immediate, narrow, short-time focus. And Brett's talking about a problem, if the demographer was right, and he wouldn't talk about past five years, but I was thinking past five years, anyway. Brett's talking about a problem we're gonna, we're likely to run into with increasing frequency. And since we don't have that extra administrator to plan for long-term, this and that, it's the job of the school board to be thinking about those things and how we're gonna handle it. And we probably haven't been doing that enough. And it's, it's a difficult task. I don't even know how to begin to approach it, but I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah. And what I keep coming back to is, could we put another teacher at OCA? Sure. Would that person be better served helping more than four kids? Also probably true. So these are, it sucks to have this conversation, but, I mean, if we look at, I know we're not supposed to talk about it, right, but we cut support professionals at the RNASU level, right, in the budget that was passed. I don't know what those folks were doing. Maybe we couldn't even find someone to fill those jobs. But those were services at one point that we felt like we needed. And we're talking about cutting teachers. And I don't see any information telling me that kids are doing better than they were five years ago. So I'm not sure how we get to the decision that we are comfortable with this. We shouldn't be comfortable with this. But if I were to say, is, is it, does it make sense to hire teachers so that we don't have multi-age classrooms? Kind of no, because we'd be better off to take those kids and bring them to Neshabie. And I know nobody wants to hear that, but, like, there's space there. The classroom wouldn't be overcrowded, and the education quality would stand a better chance of being higher because the teacher would be focused on that, that grade level.
Isn't that the whole reason I'm putting addition on, because we're running out of room in Neshabie?
Apparently, that's not a problem anymore.
Oh, since we've talked about putting addition on, it's not a problem anymore?
Let, let Debbie.
So I think that, you know, to sort of piggyback on what Brenda said and really what you're all saying and struggling with this, so. So it, it's sort of like, you know, four kids in one class, I think we can all agree, you know, is just not easy. It's, it's very, you know, all you need is one absat one day and you're down to three. I mean, it's just, it isn't a good model. However, you know, what I presented to you as a sort of solution to this, I could think of a lot of other solutions if we had more money. You know, it would, and it wouldn't have four kids in one class. I could think of a lot of other solutions if we had, you know, if we had the ability to spend more money. But as somebody just said, you know, it's about us being fiscally responsible. It's about saying sort of like, you know, we need larger class, or we need more class sizes that are within our, our policy. It's about thinking about all the things. So, you know, I don't like to use the term lesser of two evils, but like I said, I could think of a lot of other models that we could use if we had, you know, different staffing or different monies that wouldn't have four students in one class. But it's about trying to balance the best solution. You know, Lori said, we don't want to, you know, keep, not her exact words, but chasing the multi-age, you know, first it's at K1, then it's at 1-2. That's why looking at the whole school and scheduling them all together is a solution. And again, there's way more solutions, given more funding, but it's kind of where we're at right now. So it's finding the best solution with the funding that we have available to us. And that ultimately, of course, is the board's decision as to, you know, what, what our community can, can support. So, so do you know that there's, you know, I echo what Brenda says. You know, I can think of other solutions that, of course, I would love to put forth, but it's about, you know, what you all think that we can afford and what our community can afford.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Regarding the, the three teachers at Nashobee with the one with the asterisk, you know, the one that it, that might be. So would it, because would that person like that be able to, to, let's say that if it comes down to two classrooms with a floater or with a teacher who then could spend time similarly to an interventionist that shares schools?
I, I think that there's, I think that Lori brought, Lori sort of tasked us with thinking about those things.
Okay.
Fernanda, and I think that that's...
Because that doesn't cost more money. That's already in the...
Right, right, right. I just didn't want to sort of throw things out here right now that we haven't actually sat down and put on paper. What my brain's already going.
Right, and as an administrator, my brain is going there. Like, you know, I think I can, I can think of that. But, but what I mean is, I think you can take the current staffing that you have for all of your schools and be thoughtful about that situation. And again, I don't think that multi-age classrooms are necessarily a negative...
Right, it's having support.
And I think that if, they have to be done with careful planning and thinking. And they can be incredibly successful and be good for kids. So I don't want it to, to think that, you know, a straight classroom never has one level of, of students. You know, a, a straight, a, a straight grade classroom has many levels. And teachers have to be flexible and teach to what, you know, to what the present levels of the kids that are in their classroom are, regardless of what grade level it is, right? So teachers are accustomed to, to knowing multiple levels to be able to teach. It's not so much about that as much as it is about the curriculum and the expectations that administration puts on those teachers to be able to teach. If you're, if you're thinking that you said something about teaching a program to fidelity, you're not going to be able to do that in the same way with one teacher unless you provide another person to give that part of the lesson. We used to look at a ninety-minute literacy block, and for thirty minutes in our multi-age classrooms, we have two people teaching the lesson. And then the rest, the sixty minutes, could be one teacher because that was another level of more individual. So I think that there are opportunities to think creatively and to, to think about your staffing beyond the OCA to be able to support the decision. But I stand behind the decision that a class of fourteen, even if it's multi-age, it's a, it's a doable thing with the right level.
So one of the things that I would add to this, once I find out who's...
Can someone, someone's not muted. Can whoever's... Andrea, can you mute your...
Got her.
Thank you.
We are in the process of our middle-of-the-year testing window. So we are going to have some very good data that we're going to be designing our continuous improvement plan around for each of our schools. Based on that information, as well as the information that comes in throughout the course of the year, we're going to start having a, a much better idea of the performance and the, and then, and the differences between some of our students, between some of the grade levels, schools, and the, the curriculum and the performance as well. So, one of the, I, I think it's, it's really important for us, to an extent this year, but certainly in the years going forward, since we're talking about teachers, adults, and the structure that we have in place to make sure that our students are achieving all that they can and making sure that they're engaged, and making sure that they belong, and that they are not only just going from grade to grade, but they're being successful as they move through our system. And so we're going to be able to present that information to the board. I think that we'll have the middle-of-the-year data for you with the, the first continuous improvement plan in...
I, I'd like...
March or April?
I think we'll at least have some, I'd like to share some initial pieces as we're going along. So in March and in April.
In March, and so, and we're looking, we're looking, we're going to be looking at this data almost in every capacity possible, whether it's teacher, grade level, EST plan, special education, free or reduced lunch. We're going to be looking at, looking at it in a lot of ways because the, the structure that we're talking about, if we just reproduce it every year, there's, and we're just kind of budgeting around the edges, I don't know if that's what is the best, is going to set up the best outcomes for our kids. And so these conversations that we're having about one or two teachers here and there, yes, we definitely need to be looking at the structure. But I think we also need to be looking at our delivery system as well to make sure that the students have what they need for the thirteen years that we have them. So that that way, when they get to whatever their next step is, they're going to be successful right away.
Question, way out there, but should be sustained.
No, go ahead.
Of, of full consolidation from the Lester School and staff work together.
Not right now. The, the larger classes are too big. There wouldn't, there would not be a way to do that. Currently. We don't know what's going to happen.
Because part of me thinks that we should start consolidating facilities to, you know, it's a lot of money to run these places.
So the issue is, one of the issues is, and I'll, I'll just be frank about it, is that if you were to pull the four kids out of OCA as first graders and put them into Nashobee, just because they have space, then you are creating a snowball effect that essentially you're draining OCA and eventually they, because once those first graders are gone, they're not coming back as second, third, and fourth graders. That, that class is gone.
Sure, so then consolidating facilities makes sense to me.
Sure, but we don't have space for that right now.
Well, would that be the, what we should be thinking about is building?
Oh, well, yeah, I mean...
Yeah, that was the intention of the demographic study that we did, so we can start looking at that and already know that twenty-nine, thirty, there, we need to be making decisions probably starting next year, if not this year, for twenty-nine, thirty, because twenty-nine, thirty is really kind of a, a impact point.
You mean twenty-thirty, right?
Well, twenty-nine, twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-nine.
Okay, because when I see twenty-nine, thirty, I was like...
Man, that's nine hundred years from now.
Long-term planning, that's what that is.
Right, so, but that's where we have a facilities committee coming up as one of the next things.
Jasmine.
Um, when you speak on, like, the tests that evaluate the students and where they're at and where they need extra help, are you talking about like STAR testing, like that kind of testing?
So that's some of it. So we're looking at, for the, for the kindergarten and grade one, there's something called FastBridge. STAR, STAR, although STAR goes through all grade levels, we also have to look at the VT cap, so, which is the state test. But then, starting this year, we also included all tenth and eleventh graders taking the PSAT, so we'll have that data too. And so from that kind of data, we can start looking at potential enrichment advancement, advanced placement courses that we can be offering at the high school level as well. So just making sure that we're not just looking at one thing, but also, but being able to look at multiple points so that that way we can make sure that whatever helps a student feel engaged, helps them feel like they belong, help them feel like they're included in the system as a whole, we need to make sure that we're doing that.
And we also have more, I was just speaking with one of our, with one of our contractors, with the reading league, we also have more diagnostic assessments that, so we have our screeners like STAR and FastBridge, the superintendent Sanchez just mentioned. We also have diagnostic assessments that really get down to, that dive into sort of like, what does this particular learner need? So those, you know, we're adding that so that we're really able to provide exactly what each student needs.
And then there's also the informal things, so like my meetings with the seniors, I've learned a lot, whether there are students who are here or students at Stafford, things that we need to consider just in designing, in designing our school that we have here.
Fernanda, did I see your hand up? No?
Yeah, she sent a message in the text.
Oh, okay.
She's not feeling well, she wants to postpone Hawk Hill.
Oh, okay. Yes, okay, Hawk Hill, we will, yes, if you're, we'll table Hawk Hill to the next meeting. So thank you, Fernanda, for being here. I'm sorry that you're not feeling well. Okay, so we will table this discussion on the budget and district warning till next week when we can see outcomes of number of students and whatever else the administration might be able to come up with for our budget moving forward. Okay, appoint and finalize facility community membership. So we have four board members that are part of that committee, which is myself, Kevin, and who are the other two? Natalie, I think you're one of them, right? And who's the fourth one?
Leslie.
Leslie, thank you, all right. So I have been in touch with the people that we had come up with for a list. We need to determine who our community members are going to be. Jay Merluzi said thank you, but he could not due to personal reasons. Naomi Malay was interested, but when I reached back out to her, I didn't hear from her, so I'm going to assume she is not. Michael Markowski said yes, he would be interested. Chuck Charbonneau said yes, he would be interested. Donna Wilson, if you are online, I didn't have an email for you, but I assume you were interested since you were here the last couple of meetings. Correct me if I'm wrong. Tanner Romano said yes, he would be interested. Amber Lee was a last-minute addition, and she said yes, she would be interested. And Sue and David Markowski are currently out of the country or somewhere else. But they said they would be back by the twentieth, and they would be interested probably as well, unless we wanted Michael and then, you know, since Michael is their son. So, based on the people that I just gave you, we need to come up with four members for our community, our committee. I don't know if you want to talk about it, if you want to do it by voice vote, if you want to write them down, and we just take the four people who have the highest. What's your pleasure?
I know, I don't know all of them, so I don't...
Where's everybody from?
Tanner Romano is here from Brandon. Donna Wilson is from Pittsburgh. Amber Lee lives in Brandon. Chuck Charbonneau lives in Pittsburgh. And Michael lives in Pittsburgh slash Florence, somewhere in there, Brandon.
Two of them, I don't know. I'm all, I'm good with the three. I don't even really, but two of them, I don't know.
Wasn't there Donna, you said Donna Wilson?
Donna Wilson, she's from Pittsburgh. She's been at our meeting, asking questions of the...
So we don't have anybody from not Pittsburgh or Brandon?
Well, you guys didn't give me... So that was Jay Merluzi. He lives in Brandon now, but he used to live in Sudbury. But no, we do not, we didn't, that was, they did not come up on our list when we were coming up with people. And we really do need to start this process. So, however, I can tell you that for OV reps, we have four students who are interested. They are Winter Blaisdell, Fiona Taylor, Miley Lape, and Jacob Worrell. I know where Winter's from, and I think I'm pretty sure I know where Miley's from. The other two, I'm not so sure.
Jacob's from Pittsburgh.
Is he from Pittsburgh? Okay. And Fiona, does anybody know where Fiona's from? So that was, Michael did blast that out to all ninth through twelfth graders. So these were the four kids that showed interest.
Just think the, the wider representation, the better, obviously.
Understood. I think that we'll be able to get representation from other people in different ways, but yes.
I think it's good that we had construction professionals on that list. So I'd want to make sure that at least one, maybe...
Well, there's three of them here, so...
Is that Chuck Charbonneau is here?
Chuck Charbonneau is also a construction guy, yep.
How much he doesn't do.
And the parents of students would be important.
Okay, yep, so that would be Michael and Tanner and Amber. They all have students in school. Donna might have grandkids, I don't know.
We need how many, three?
Four.
What do you need us to do?
I need someone to make a motion or someone to, or we need to vote or something.
There's five on the list?
There's one, two, three, four, five, yes.
Why don't we just send all five?
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, Charlene, Paul made the motion to have all five members, Michael Markowski, Chuck Charbonneau, Amber Lee, Donna Wilson, and Tanner Romano to the committee. And Brett, Brent, excuse me, seconded that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of those five members being added to the committee, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, and now for students. We have four interested. I don't think we can have all four, unfortunately, on the committee. Makes it kind of wieldy, kind of like this board. But if you wanted two, I don't see a problem with that.
Should we leave that to Mr. Ruppel?
No, these four people were, were at, I mean, I can...
Gracious, we have to vote on these kids. That seems wrong. I just, I don't know. I mean, I don't know how to...
Well, I will reach out to them then and find out what their availability is.
Do you know what years in school they are?
Winter and Fiona are both in ninth grade. Miley Lape is a senior, and I'm not sure about Jacob.
She's a senior?
He's a junior.
Miley is...
Okay, junior, I was gonna say. Winter and Fiona are freshmen?
Yep.
And what was, who's the other?
Miley is a senior.
But, oh, someone, yes, someone who's going to be...
Um, Miley Lape...
Maybe one senior and one freshman.
Okay.
I just caution you about a senior. I, I think it's a good idea, but you have four months of them. This is going to take longer than that.
Well, we've got, well, we have to have something to the board by June, and they're going to graduate in June, so we've got until then.
Wait a minute.
So I think we're okay with having the senior. At least for this, this time.
Which one is a senior?
Miley.
I thought you said she was a junior.
No, Jacob is a junior.
Jacob is, okay.
The only thing about Miley, I'm all for her, I love Miley, me and her are like this. But she does have basketball. So like, I don't know, how how often are these meetings?
I suspect that they will be at least every couple of weeks, depending on what kind of information that we get and what information we need to collect in order to have a meeting. If we have to bring something before the board by June, then we need to be having meetings regularly.
Okay, that's the only thing, so honestly, I'm not sure. I think we should check with Miley. I think having a senior and a freshman is a good idea, but I'm not sure if that will work out.
Alright. Well, let me put out feelers to them and find out what um and, uh, cause I would like to have our first meeting by the end of the month. At least to get together and figure out what we need and go from there.
Did we pick a freshman?
Not yet, no. Um, I will reach out to Fiona and Winter and see what their availability is.
Then if Miley's not able to, Jacob's.
Then we'll ask Jacob, yeah.
Cause they'll at least be here through next year.
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay?
It might be good to have an alternate.
Uh, yeah, I think Jacob.
I don't know that you want, I don't think you want an alternate, cause you need someone who's gonna be there and not show up, you know, when we've already discussed things. That can, you know, then we have to start over again. So, alright, I'll reach out to them and see who's got the most availability and go from there.
And will be, will Melinda be scheduling those meetings?
Um, I'll talk to Melinda, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, cause we need to see what your availability is too.
Okay.
Okay, alright. Superintendent Progress Report. Um, in case uh you didn't get the memo, Renee is now our uh permanent superintendent.
Yay, thank you. I thought you said thank you. Congratulations, and I'm sorry.
Oh, ow, okay.
Oh, no, it is more than fine, more than fine. Let me, I have uh just a couple of slides that I wanna uh talk about. The transition from interim to uh interim to superintendent. So let me get back here. Do this. Okay, yeah. So the first few slides are just uh talking about evalu-, because the reason what what spawned this short presentation was, this is normally the time where you'd start talking about evaluating the superintendent. And so since uh I was serving as the interim, um there wasn't necessarily going to be an evaluation. Um, so, but now that I'm transitioning to um to the the permanent superintendent, just wanted to have kind of little check in of what we've been or what I've been up to this first semester, uh and then kind of how I'm finishing the the year, and then our relationship through the district quality standards, and then the Board Governors' Monitoring Report that we've been talking about um for what uh for what will be in place for the future, um as far as making sure that um the board comes up and works with me to develop these uh goals. But one of the things that I think is really important and that we are able to discuss is that the goals really should be yearly, I mean, they should, they should happen where they're multi-year. So the goals shouldn't change year to year, because then we're kind of running around trying to solve different issues. Um, and so I, we can definitely talk about that as as we get closer to the end of the year, because it'd be great to be able to um have these goals cascade from me to central office to the campuses all the way down through, um, all the way to our students, so that that way we are focusing all of our energy on the reason that we are here. Um, so when uh when I started, uh, some of the the original goals that that I understood from taking on the role was to, first of all, make sure that um with the many new administrators or administrators who are new to their roles, making sure that that I'm able to use my experience, my uh my 30 years of experience, to be able to come in and and work with them to understand um their roles in our RNSU and Vermont context. Uh, number two, although it's listed as number two, it's really kind of number one, is make sure that while I'm here, that we get to the point where we're able to pass a budget, ideally on the first run. Um, and then the last two were really designed to to s- make sure that the next superintendent was gonna be set up in a position to be successful. So coming in and be able to observe, strengthen, create systems for the next superintendent, and then also while I'm here, making sure that I'm building connections with um with our with our constituents uh within the school, the school district and supervisory union and out in the community as well. So in my first six months, uh, one of the things that that um I do, um, at, because I I can't not think about systems, and I can't not think about the choices that went into developing those systems and all of the choices that have uh along the way, it was really important for me to listen and to observe and um ask a lot of questions. Um, along the way, I've learned, uh, I didn't know what to put here. It's like learned stuff, unearthed stuff. But it was really just, once I got that stuff, um, uh, working with our central office, working with our uh with our uh, both of our um uh collective bargaining associations, working with our central office, working with our campuses, kind of assessing and evaluating what we have in place, and have been able to to connect a lot of dots. Um, and so my conversation earlier about having to really look at the way we do business instead of kind of nibbling on the edges is, I think, something that we have to have deeper conversations about, because this school district supervisory union is going to be here for a very long time. Uh, but we know that our context is changing, whether it's um lowering enrollment or decreasing enrollment, increasing of taxes, higher expectations from both the federal government and from the state government, and also our own high level of expectations that we have for each student. We need to make sure that we are doing the things in this room to make sure that once we leave here, that those systems are in place, so that that way all of our students can be successful. So um in this, there's two more slides left, unless you want me to keep going, and then I can go. There's really only two slides left. Um, so these are some of the things that that I've been doing right now. So I didn't know what order to put them in as far as current continuing or completed. But it's making sure that I've been out in the community so that they could get to meet me and so that I could start listening to the issues that they may have. Much of that has come back to the budget. Um, some of it has come back to specific pro- programs within our school district. Um, the same thing can be said about number two. One of the things that I I really enjoy is 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 meeting and chatting with our students. Uh, right now, I'm meeting mostly with our with our 12th graders um and hearing about their experience within um within our um organization, so that that way um I can have a better idea of how well we're doing in their eyes, because it's really important for them to, as they leave here, they're gonna become future taxpayers, and we need to make sure that they pass budgets later on too. So make sure that you fill out your voter registration forms this year, that that's coming too. Um, so uh, the state of Vermont does not require uh any kind of testing, with the exception for the science test, um after ninth grade. So, um, and doesn't matter how you do in ninth grade, does uh whether you pass or you, whether you show proficiency or you don't show proficiency, state doesn't really mind. So it's really up to us to make sure that we help our students and help our school through the finish line. And uh, that's three years past ninth grade. So we can't just stop looking into how students are doing at the ninth grade level. Uh, one of the things that I thought was really important, because the emphasis on the budget has been placed on um on our administration since we first, since I first arrived, is to make sure that we um listen to everybody that we that we could. So typically, uh, I guess, uh, I was told that we would go talk to the schools after the budget had been approved by the board. So we wanted to make sure that we actually got out to off to faculty meetings in the run up to the presentation of a budget, where Brendan and I were able to present and talk about what the what the context was, what the boards were recommending. Uh, and we wanted to do, uh, make sure that we listen to folks uh during those meetings. Um, we're well aware of, we did an internal and external budget survey. Uh, we had the demographic study. Um, already have started presenting on uh data for, but we know that that's coming up again, cause we have to rewrite it for uh this coming year and submit one not just for the school district, but we have to submit one for the entire, for each and every school. Uh, we have been working with our Vermont Principals Association and the Vermont NEA to bring um to bring good trainings for our administrators. Uh, we had the NEA Train Us on Supervision and Evaluation. Uh, and our Principals Association talked to us about building uh building cohesive schools as well as dealing with um conflict. Uh, we have had one meeting of PTO uh and Booster Club Council of Presidents. We will have one of those coming up soon. And I think number 11 is going to be uh the one that we've started, but is going to be the one that I think is going to eh is going to help us achieve that that idea of what we are trying to accomplish. I know that there has been profile of a graduate work done, but I don't know to what extent that profile of a graduate has been done in conjunction with the global ends. And so if the profile of the graduate and the global ends aren't communicating with one another, if our state snapshot and the global ends, if our special education indicators and our global ends are not talking to one another, if our grade books are not talking uh with our global ends, then, and our budget is not talking to our global ends, we need to make sure that that they do. They need to be in complete alignment. And so that's the piece that I I am really counting on Debbie and Brian, um, the principals and Brenda and everybody else at Central Office to make sure that we have this in place for us, so that when a question arises, we can point to what the board has, um, what the board expects from the administration to implement. So upcoming, so these are the things that that are either this year or this summer. So um the continuing the community meetings, uh, knowing that we have the the budget running up, we, I want to expand to beyond mornings, so I'll include afternoons at the libraries and Saturdays at at the various transfer stations in the supervisory union. Um, we'll have to schedule those so that people can come and uh visit. Uh, so I am adding 11th graders and BUU eighth graders to my visits, um, starting in late February, so I can um hear what they have to say in their run up to their senior year. Um, we'll be adding office hours for campus employees after school, so that that way, um, if they have anything they want to say, that they would like to add about the budget or anything else in general, I'll be sitting there for 75 minutes or so, and they can come have a, come have a chat. When I was a principal um in Houston, one of the things that I I don't, I'll have to figure out how to do this, but uh popsicles are very popular in Houston, cause it's hot. Uh, and so I would have popsicles with the principal after school. So I'll have to figure out what the equivalent of that is here. Um, we are, uh, we, in a couple of weeks, we are starting a special education audit. This will be, uh, Brian will be overseeing this. Uh, we'll be looking at a lot of our components within within our special education program to make sure that it is running on all cylinders. Uh, we have now, we have uh received our data for the last, uh, since the graduating class of 2018. Um, so we know how our students at least have, um, whether they've entered into college, matriculated in the college and graduated if from college. Um, and so what I'd like to use that as kind of the starting point, um, cause I need to reach out to Stafford if they have in, if they have information on apprenticeships and other things like that. Um, and I keep pushing the state to um find a way to, uh, if we can send them our social security numbers, if they can give us whether somebody's employed or if they are in a specific industry, so that that way we have that data as well. But this is a starting point for us, so that that way, long term, is that I'd like for us to be able to say, okay, if you come to us in pre-K, we know that this is within pre-K, you should be working towards this. First grade, you're working towards this, rather than just us looking at things in a segmented fashion, if segmented fashion. Um, we need to be thinking about what is a student going to be doing when they're graduating from high school the entire time. So I brought this up too. I I I've shared that before, uh, I've shared that last year we had some issues with attendance. I want to make sure that we are looking for ways that we can improve belonging, engagement, and inclusivity, so we can address attendance, performance, and graduation. Um, cause I think we could do, uh, I I'd like to make sure that we increase our um our four-year graduation uh rate right now. Um, but I also feel like it's something that I have to push at the state level, cause that is a much longer conversation, and I've got, I don't have very nice words to say about that. Um, number seven is uh making sure uh what we are planning on um training every paraprofessional in our district this coming year, adding a two days to their um, two days to their calendar, so that we can align our special educa-, I'm sorry, our social emotional learning, so the training, expectation, and resources. Um, number eight is really big for me, uh, as far as making sure that when we're making decisions, uh, whether they're academic, budgetary, operations, or otherwise, that we're not just using narrative and opinion, that we're actually using quantitative data, because we need to make sure that all of our students are taken into consideration when we're making decisions. And then, in order to help us with many of the questions that arise from our community, I think it's really important for us to have an external facing, uh, external facing data dashboard with a select information, whether it's about, um, whether it's about uh VT cap performance, attendance, discipline, things like that. You know, it's not gonna be at the student level, but it would be at the district level. I think if there's a way for us to show um our performance financially as well, I think of, I think uh, uh, the community would really appreciate that. And then finally, um, one of the things that that as in, as part of serving on the state Special Education Advisory Panel, um, that I've discovered that other districts have, is that they have Special Education Parent Advisory Councils. So they usually start off with a a committee that's overseen by the school district. They invite parents to join, and then after a few months, the school district turns it over to the parents, and they form, they create the mission, the vision, the bylaws, and monthly meetings are held, so that that way, if there are issues um involving special education, they can be dealt with um, um, early on, because they're coming to this council, and uh, it's the parents leading it, as opposed to the district being in charge of it. And so uh, these are some of the things that that fortunately, through the the collaboration that I have with uh my administrators, that we've been able to get um up uh and uh have literally uh posted notes all around my office, uh, so that that way we're prepared for this. Um, and I can't begin to thank them and and begin to thank the board and the students for giving me this opportunity to to continue on in this role.
I'm tired just looking at that.
That's a lot of work.
That's a lot of work, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, any questions for Renee on any of that?
When do you sleep?
Do you sleep?
During the week, not enough. On the weekend, uh, I try to get in a good, long nap.
Alright. Um, RNSU Board Update. So, we approved a budget uh last meeting. Um, I don't remember what the increase was, but some of the things that came out of that was that um going forward, we will, um, the RNSU Board members will present the um OVUU budget, or the OVUU Board with the RNSU budget um after their meeting in November. So it would be part of the first meeting in December, which is also when we usually see our first look at the um OVUU budget. So that you will all know what's going on in the RNSU budget. Um, what else did we do?
We just talked about the budget, I believe.
Yeah, that's what I think, so, anyway, so, um, if, anyway, our next meeting for RNSU is in two weeks.
Two weeks?
Uh, let's see.
No, it's next week.
Oh, yeah, okay. Great.
Yep.
I'll try to be there. Alright.
See, I thought it was in two weeks too.
I know, yeah, yeah, okay. Um, Hawk Hill Committee Update, uh, Fernanda asked us to forego that, cause she wasn't feeling well. We'll dive into that next time. Other business for future consideration?
Yes. Um, at this point of a meeting, I learned as a lecturer, you gotta be super energetic. And so it's to get people's attention. And um, I want to talk about uh this book, The Anxious Generation. It's about kids and phones, and about how phones destroy kids emotionally in many ways, and and also hurt concentration. And this book boils down, there's an argument that boils down to five words. Get rid of phones.
Get rid of phones completely. And by completely, he means no phones at lunch, no phones in the hallways, get rid of phones out of school. So I would like to put this on the agenda. I emailed Professor Haight and asked for his permission to put four pages of this book in the public record. He granted that. I've got them here, so I'm gonna pass them out for homework, and it won't take long to read. This is also something that's free. It doesn't cost the taxpayers anything to make this change. It's a change that should come from the board. It should come, it's a policy that protects our administrators and our teachers. And though it's difficult, we all know how much phones distract us. I was just looking around tonight, looking at people playing with their phones. I'm 65 years old. It's changed my level of concentration. It's been bad for me having a smartphone. I've only had it for a couple of years. So what phones are doing to our children is something that we need to take on. It's a change we can make, it's a change that we can be a pioneer in. So, I want the students particularly to, to make this idea known, because we're gonna get feedback on this. There's gonna be pushback on this, too, I think. But I think you guys know, and I think your peer group knows, even though you're addicted to phones, that, that ultimately, in a lot of ways, it can be bad for you. So, that's it. So please put this on the agenda for maybe when we're done with exhausting budget.
Budgets like February?
Yeah.
All right. February. Okay, anything else from any other energetic board members?
Are there any other energetic board members?
No, well, I wasn't sure, so I'm just checking.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. You're not being very energetic.
He's all pretty mellow. See, he's like a mellow guy.
Adapting a service work program for punishment here. Instead of expelling students, I want to see, I would like to see as a parent, a type of service program.
Like restorative justice, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Janitorial services.
To, instead of just, oh, you got trouble, you're expelled, or, you know, that doesn't do anything for anybody. So yes, restorative justice, I think. I think it's, I believe it's very possible to do.
Probably won't come on until February, either.
It's okay, I just, it's something, yes.
Okay, because we'll probably have someone come and talk about it?
Sure.
And then you can go from there. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
All right. Okay, anything else? Okay. Superintendent Informational Report. You should have had that in your records. Is there anything you wanted to highlight?
Just a couple of things. So, mention the middle-of-the-year assessment. That, we're currently, you know, living through that right now. I'm really excited about the information that we're gonna get back from it and how we are going to analyze it with our principals. The other piece that I think is really interesting, too, is number four, the themes from the youth engagement. We hosted a Listen and Learn here for our students, I guess in December. And so, these are the questions that they answered for our school. So if you click on A, you'll see the, not just the answers for the state in general, but also the information that came up here in Otter Valley.
Cool. Okay. So our next meeting is next Tuesday at January 14th. It is a special budget meeting, so that's the only thing that should be on the agenda, just so you know. But, for those of you who are interested, we are gonna have a board candidate info session, so anybody who's new or wants to know more about what the OVUU Board does and is interested in maybe becoming a candidate for our board, we will meet here Tuesday at 5:00, an hour before the special meeting.
Is this something that people who are rerunning for their seats should, okay? I wasn't sure.
If you're rerunning for your seat, no need to come. But if, if new people who are thinking about running for the board, they should come.
Thank you.
Okay? All right. And I know that you all want to go home, but I have one more thing under executive session. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session at?
7:59.
7:59.
I'm second.
So Kevin put us in, and Barbara seconded it.